Good morning. I would like to call to order the Pasco County Board of Commission 10 o'clock meeting of February 21st, 2023. At this time, silence all electronic devices and mutual microphones. Please rise the indication and pledge.
Oh mercy full Creator, your hand is open wide to satisfy the needs of every living creature. Make us thankful for your loving providence and grant that we remembering the account that we must one day give may be faithful stewards of your good gifts. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
District one, Commissioner Oakley.
Here.
District two, Commissioner Waitman.
Here.
District three, Commissioner Starkey.
Here.
District four, Commissioner Bradford.
Here.
And District five, Chairman Mariano.
Here. Now is the time for public comment. Citizens are given an opportunity to comment on any current or future agenda item coming before the Board and on any other business under the Board's purview. Today's public comment will be handled as follows. First, we will take public comment from those who are here in person. Then, we will take public comment for those who are pre-registered for a WebEx link and are currently on cue. We request, when you address the Board, comments are not directed personally at a Commissioner or team member, but rather directed at the issues. This provides mutual respect between the Board members and the public. After stating your name and address for the Clerk, a three-minute timer will be activated. After two minutes, a single beep will indicate you have one minute left. When your time is up, two beeps will sound, and you should close your comments. WebEx participants will be disconnected automatically when their time is up. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
We do. First is Thomas Carroll.
Thank you. My name's Thomas Carroll. I live at 9119 Flagstick Lane, Hudson, Florida. Thank you for the time to talk about the closed golf course in Hudson, the Lynx. Ryan Holmes has made several presentations to the homeowners' associations of the estates where 14 holes of the golf course are on, and Fairway Oaks where I live, on the east side of Little Road where four holes of the old golf course is. And there's a golf path that runs under Little Road that I believe is county property. I purchased my home in July of 2003 on the then 13th hole green, and I paid a premium for being on the golf course at that time. I understand that the county cannot require a company to run a money losing business, and the current owner, who closed the course several years ago, claimed he was losing money in a declining business. There was even an article that was written about that at the time in the Tampa Times. Since the closing, though, we as homeowners have had to live with an unkept, poorly maintained neighbor. I understand the county has at this time fined this owner approximately a quarter of a million dollars without any payments or concerns on his part. A few years ago, a tree farm of scrub pines was planted on the property. Trees were planted throughout the property, including retention areas, and the area is not properly maintained, and the fire break, if you want to call it that, was supposedly put into place. In just a few short years, some trees have grown to five to six feet, and soon, in my opinion, will pose a fire hazard if struck by lightning. And we do live in a state that's kind of called the lightning capital. We now have a developer making presentations that they are purchasing the old golf course and other property to build 218 single-family homes, cut a new street onto Hudson Avenue by Library Road, which will dramatically increase traffic and possibly cause a dangerous intersection. I was informed when the golf course closed that an MPUD was in place for many years that had required the 18-hole golf course with many slanted fairways to be in place to alleviate excessive rains during any kind of storms, hurricanes, et cetera. I am asking for the Board's help in reviewing this builder, this building of this development of the golf course that can create more problems for us in the future as neighbors of Pasco. Thank you for your time.
And Tom, your leadership has asked me to bring out staff to kind of update you because you've heard presentations from everybody else around it. So, we're working with your team to actually do that. I think I've got a date selected.
I think our president is here who will be talking too.
Okay. Well, I'll let you guys continue then. Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Jay.
Okay. Thank you. The next one is Pastor Leonard Lord.
Leonard Lord, I live at 9525 Sunbeam Drive, Newport Ritchie, Florida for about 46 years. Want to say it's an honor and a joy to be here. Want to say hello to all of you in the name of Jesus, and it's good to have Mr. Waitman on the Board and Mr. Bradford. I came quite a while for some years and then adopting the grandson, haven't had time to be here. But anyway, I know I've been told by many and discerned that y'all do fear the Lord, and that's good. And of course, we're exhorted in Christians, as Christians, by Apostle John on the Isle of Patmos to not forsake our first love. Now, what I found, it's easy to forsake the love of Jesus and let other things creep in. And what happens is, he says if we do forsake our first love, that our candlestick would be removed. We wouldn't be the highlight he wants us to be. So, it's the person of Christ we have a relationship with that gives us the wisdom as leaders, the ability to make the decisions for the people. And just here, I'm just speaking in reference to what's on my shirt, that we've had a word for years and prayer that Pasco would be a forerunner of good things to come. You see, Jesus was the first one to lay His life down and live fully for others through the love of the Father, and He entered in behind the veil to live and pray for us. So, I'm just here to just say there's only really one King, one lawgiver, one judge, and His name is Jesus Christ. So, I pray that God would deliver us from the fear of man and the laws of man and get back to the heart of life. And I appreciate y'all helping that. And of course, Pastor Troy Peterson will share more on our prayer time coming. God bless you, and may God bless you, and may Pasco County indeed fulfill its prophecy, be a forerunner of good things to come into all the world. Lord bless you.
Thank you. So, the next one is Pastor Troy Peterson.
Motion received. File.
So, move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any votes?
Aye.
Okay. Troy Peterson, 81, 14 Leo Kid Road, Port Ritchie, Florida. Commissioners, first off, I want to thank you for opening up this podium to give others an opportunity to share and to speak. I want to personally thank Commissioner Mariano and the others, the sheriff, if he's watching, for partnering with Somebody Cares Pasco in doing the National Day of Prayer. That's been done, I believe Commissioner could help me on this, for the last 20 years, right out here on our, right on the front steps, also being done in Dade City. I want to introduce this prayer guide to y'all. Every year, we do 40 days of prayer, starting on Ash Wednesday, leading up to Palm Sunday, the Wednesday following. Just imagine the church in Pasco praying according to Scripture in God's heart. Imagine Christians united to cry out for transformation of our community. Imagine our unified prayers piercing to the heavens over Pasco County. Imagine the church in Pasco praying together. I will add, I was on a Zoom call with several other pastors and leaders throughout the U.S. last night. I have 20 other pastors in different states throughout the U.S. that are going to be praying this specific prayer guide. So, what we've done this year is normally we receive a prayer guide. The national ministry that puts that out didn't do a prayer guide this week, or this year, so we put one together, and you're holding it in your hands. We got together on Wednesdays with several different leaders from the community. We came up with the Scriptures. And what we're doing this year differently is we're praying the Seven Mountain of Influence. Isaiah 2 says, "The mountain of the Lord's house shall be established in the hills." That's a place of power. That's a place of authority. There's a place of power and authority in the government, in the education, in the family, in the businesses, in the media, in the arts and entertainment. So, what we want to invite is government leaders March 8th at the Oasis Coffee Spot, 6:30 in the evening. We're going to be praying specifically for our government leaders. If any of you can make it that night, we'd love to pray over you. Also, education is a key thing. We've been going into the school board meetings. We want to pray over our school board members. And so, this is a time of prayer leading up to the National Day of Prayer, which I believe that would be May 4th, right out here. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you. So, the next individual did not leave their name. They only left the topic car washes. So, when the, okay, she knows who she is. She'd come on up and introduce herself.
Thank you for letting me speak. I do not represent any company.
We need your name and.
I am an individual who has lived in Pasco County.
Remember, we need your name and address.
Name and address.
My name is Loretta Albanese.
Okay. And your address, Ms. Albanese.
And your address?
Pardon?
Your address?
Oh, 10418 Maverick Street, Newport Ritchie, 34654-5828. My husband worked for the post office. I am an individual who is very upset by the fact that we as homeowners can only water our grass on the day that corresponds with the last number of our address. But yet, I see people all over the place spraying their lawns with their sprinkler systems. What's going to happen to the water in a few years? The people that come before me, after me, what are they going to drink? You can't manufacture water. And now, you're letting car washes be built every place in Pasco. Eventually, this county will be known as Pasco the Car Wash County. They're everywhere. Some of them are only two tenths of a mile from the other gas station, and they're across the street from each other. It doesn't make any sense. I don't know what the county does when somebody buys a piece of land. Do they tell them they're going to build a car wash there? Doesn't anybody say to them, "Why are you building a car wash? There's one right next door." Or, "There's one two tenths of a mile on Trouble Creek and Rowan Road. There's a new car wash going up on the corner. Two tenths of a mile up Rowan Road. There's another car wash that has been there for over 30 years." So, I don't understand. This is not just Pasco. It's probably everywhere. I haven't been to the east side of the county. I don't want to go over there and see 100 more new car washes being built every place. I think some sort of a, there has to be some sort of a guideline. You just can't come in and build a car wash here, and there's one across the street, or there's one around the corner. I just think we need to worry about the future generation of this county that will be needing water in order to be able to survive. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So, the next one signed up is Alan Rose.
Good morning. Alan Rose, 10221 Hilltop Jive, Newport Ritchie, Florida, 34654. I come to you, I see that we're getting waterways on the agenda. See, 10 is the item number. See that you're making progress. There's some money coming in that you can work with. I've got waterways management experience over 30 years. I've been bringing to you for a number of years, a proposal to take care of our entire coastline. Our coastline is in serious need of help. Now, I'll be retiring this year, and I'm offering my assistance to the county to help get this done. We have many different, many different areas to go for direct funding. I know there's an MSBU being proposed and different things. We have just on the state beaches, waterways, ports program, $15 million a year. Under the Coastal Barrier Resources Act, over $2 billion a year for our section in the United States, direct funding. The Army Corps of Engineers Director has $10 million direct funding available for us here. We just have to approach it properly with a plan in place and take action. For Pasco County, a success you can look at is what was done in Hudson. Hudson Beach, September 20th, September 22nd, 2020. I went and properly cleaned Hudson Beach. The Department of Health has records to show you what Hudson Beach was before that cleanup. Before that cleanup, you had numerous, couldn't count them all, failures and restrictions. People could not swim in the water. The water stank, and most people blamed it on different systems that are in place for septic systems. That wasn't the case. I went out there and I did what needed to be done, took care of it. Since that cleanup, the following year, you had three restricted times, and last year, you had one. This is what happens when it's done properly. I came in and I had built a breakwater, but the breakwater is too high, so they came in and leveled it behind me. I got a cease and desist, so I stopped. But what I did stayed in place and is still making a difference today. We can have that kind of resources and response throughout our entire coast. We can get miles of beaches for people to enjoy. We can increase our waterways dramatically and make it beautiful for everyone to enjoy. Cleaning the waters, our manatees, our sea turtles, and our waterfowl. We'll all have a place to really thrive, and that's, just wanted to bring it to you.
And Alan, thanks for coming forward. Those of you who don't know Commissioner Waitman and Bradford, Mr. Rose actually sat on the Restore Act Committee with us, but he was so intense, so involved, we had to get him off so he could actually give us more information coming forward. When you retire especially, I would love to get you, have it get you with Mr. Carbella, start looking at the grants that are out there and work with you to try to help get all the money we can in for all this restoration. And we actually have a grant in for the state, or requesting for the state to actually help with Hudson Beach too. So, love to have your involvement. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Next is Kathy Julian.
Hello. I'm back, kind of as a broken record. I was here.
Ms. Julian, can you give your name and address for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Kathy Julian. I live in Golden Acres. So, I'm back kind of as a broken record. The last time I'd come to speak was because a group of people that I'm affiliated with had been addressing porn in the schools, and I was showing you guys some, some of what was going on at the library. And actually, on the way home that time, that from that trip here, I stopped at the library and I checked this book out. And this book is truly disturbing, the images that are in it, but it's available in the library. I don't know if it's available now because I have it, and apparently, you don't do fines, so I could just like keep it forever. But I was put in contact, the commission, the chairman had me get in contact with the people from the library, and there's a form I have to fill out. And the problem I have with the form is that I need to put my name and address on it, and I don't really want that being sent out to people that are going to be looking to see if this book should come off the shelf or not. I emailed a couple of times with them, and I never heard back again. So, I didn't, you know, I don't like to be ignored. But I don't think anybody likes to be ignored, but I just would like to know how we follow up on this and how we get, I mean, I showed this to a friend of mine who works in, is a therapist, and he looked at it, and he said, "That's kiddie porn. Those are images of young boys performing nasty acts on each other, and this is in our libraries. This is not right. Why are these books there?" I understand they're in the adult section, but anybody could walk in and look at them. They're right next to the floor. I mean, this is crazy. This is in our libraries. Why is this in our libraries, guys? Why does it take a mom to come in here and bring this up? It shouldn't take a mom. There should be somebody. I mean, I know all of you are upstanding members of the community. Everybody here knows this isn't right. We shouldn't be exposing our children to this. I mean, I, I'm just befuddled, but I can't get a response. So, that's why I'm back, and I'll keep coming back every time you come to Newport Ritchie.
So, Kathy, you just gave us your name and address for the record. What's the problem with filling the form out with it?
Well, I mean, I'm giving that here, but when you're, I don't know. I don't like having my address out there. I mean, I started going to city council meetings, and then I have these crazy people texting me and emailing me, "I know where you live," and they're coming to my house.
Well, if you would, Kathy Pearson's right over there.
Yeah, I know. We emailed, but I never, I never got a response back. I asked why I have to, I mean, I don't have a problem giving you my address, but I do have a problem putting it on a form that's going to be given to people that are in the commu, you know, there's a difference.
If you would, Kathy, please talk to the facilitator. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So, next is Kim Barker.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hi. My name is Kim Barker. I live at 14232 17th Street in Dade City. And I am a lifelong resident of East Pasco and Realtor. I've been a Realtor for 16 years. I'm here this morning to, first of all, thank you for considering building such an amazing amenity center on our side of the county. I've read two articles in the paper, Tampa Bay Times and The Laker, about the potential for an aquatic center coming back to East Pasco. Pasco County owned and operated an aquatic center at Hercules Park in Zephyr Hills many years ago, and it was closed during the, you know, the housing bust. And the loss of that amenity is really sorely felt in the community. Since its closure, the residents of East Pasco don't have ease of access to aquatics or even really a good rec facility. So, I am so excited to hear that you're considering our side of the county for that type of improvement. Because as you know, the county is growing. Central Pasco has blown up, and it's coming into East Pasco. And so, the quality of life in East Pasco is really changing. The landscape is changing, the small-town feel is changing. And to be honest, there's a lot of people that are experiencing gentrification in our area. And as, you know, with growth, as a Realtor, I'm never going to come before you and complain about growth, right? Like, that's good for me and my business. But what I do care about is how the county reinvests those dollars to improve the quality of life for the people who have been there for generations. So, I would really like to see that, and I just hope that you keep us on your radar. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. And then, the last one signed up for in-person is Rick Stevenson.
My name's Rick Stevenson. I live at 14321 Pemberton Drive in Fairway Oaks. Forgot there for a moment. I would also like to mention the issues with the Lynx Golf Course, as Mr. Carroll has. I'm not going to hit the same subjects he did because we don't need to reiterate it. But as you all know, it's closed. And it's turned into a tree farm, but I have gone through and reviewed the master plan and the MPUD, and everything still shows this property as a golf course. Once again, I also went through an extensive search looking for public hearings changing this golf course to a tree farm. So, I find absolutely no paper trail that says anything going on there now is legal. We've had brush growing everywhere on the fairways. We had a homeless encampment down at the tunnel that goes underneath Little Road, and it's kind of become a dump that we've had to be cleaning up too. Let's see. I understand you're going through a similar issue with Saddle Brook in another part of the county, and you have assisted a golf course in Paradise Pines with finding a new owner and everything to bring it back to its original state. So, it's what we would like to ask. We've got like 1,000 homes that are in this golf course community, including the estates and the preserves and everything. And that's what we need to get back to so we can have it. An example, we've got a neighbor, one of the dead trees off Mr. Long's property failed, took out their iron fence, and it's all over their yard now. His response is, "Call your homeowner's insurance," even though it's his tree. And with that, I would like just ask to this chamber to reiterate and research what's going on there and give a possibility of assistance to the homeowners.
Okay. And, you know, we talked before, and you asked me about doing a meeting. We tried to, you had a meeting last time, and the developer was there, and I was there for a little bit after our board meeting that night. But I will, as we had done before, when the golf course first shut down, we brought out code enforcement team, we brought out a growth management team. I'm willing to do the same thing for you again publicly. If I have the experts there that they can talk to, you can ask all the questions you want. So, I'd like to be able, Mr. Carbella, to be able to set up to have the attorneys out there. I see Sam Bounde in the audience as well. But we can coordinate that meeting to get our staff there, our team there, so they can explain to you the technical questions. They give you their responses back.
Right.
Okay. As the Commissioners, we can't go there as a group, and frankly, I'm not going to put myself in a position to be deposed by the Realtor's friend, the Realtor that has the property for Ryan, which he threatened me at. So, I'm not going to put myself in that position, but I'll have all the experts there. They can tell you what they found. And we'll do that out in the, in your meeting that you can control.
Right. I appreciate that, and we've moved a special meeting, I think it was March 15th, and we forward the date and request to your office.
and the MPUD, and everything still shows this property as a golf course. Once again, I also went through an extensive search looking for public hearings changing this golf course to a tree farm. Excuse me. So I find absolutely no paper trail that says anything going on there now is legal. We've had brush growing everywhere on the fairways. We had a homeless encampment down at the tunnel that goes underneath Little Road, and it's kind of become a dump that we've had to be cleaning up too. Let's see, I understand you're going through a similar issue with Saddle Brook in another part of the county, and you have assisted a golf course in Paradise Pines with finding a new owner and everything to bring it back to its original state. So it's what we would like to ask, we've got like a thousand homes that are in this golf course community, including the estates and the preserves and everything, and that's what we need to get back to so we can have it. An example, we've got a neighbor, one of the dead trees off Mr. Long's property failed, took out their iron fence, and it's all over their yard now. His response is, "Call your homeowner's insurance," even though it's his street. And with that, I would like just to ask to this chamber to reiterate and research what's going on there and give a possibility of assistance to the homeowners.
Okay. And, you know, we talked before and you asked me about doing a meeting. We tried to, you had a meeting last time and the developer was there, and I was there for a little bit after our board meeting that night. But I will, as we had done before, when the golf course first shut down, we brought out code enforcement team, we brought out a growth management team, willing to do the same thing for you again publicly. If I have the experts there that they can talk to, you can ask all the questions you want. So I'd like to be able, Mr. Carbella, to be able to set up to have the attorneys out there. I see Sam Bounde in the audience as well, but we can coordinate that meeting to get our staff there, our team there, so they can explain to you the technical questions. They give you their responses back.
Right.
Okay? As commissioners, we can't go there as a group, and frankly, I'm not going to put myself in a position to be deposed by the Realtor's friend, the Realtor that has the property for Ryan, which he threatened me at. So I'm not going to put myself in that position, but I'll have all the experts there. They can tell you what they found, and we'll do that out in the, in your meeting that you can control.
Right, and I appreciate that, and we've moved a special meeting, I think it was March 15th, and we forward the date and request to your office to get everybody there on one sheet.
Okay, so Jeff and Mike, if you'd, so Jeff and Mike could be allowed to set the team up to go out there, that would be good.
All right, thank you.
There is no one else signed in for in-person.
Okay, is anyone else in the audience would like to speak and address on public comment? Okay, we'll close public comment in here. Anybody on WebEx on the queue?
Okay, so there was one signed up, but he is not in the queue, so we are good. You can move forward.
So resolutions, first resolution, RS1.
Okay. Good morning, Mr. Roberts.
Morning.
So this is Resolution Number 23071, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, commending Bill Roberts for his three-year term as chairman of the Citizens Advisory Committee for the Tampa Bay Area Regional Transit Authority representing Tampa International Airport. Whereas, Bill Roberts has been the chairman of the Citizens Advisory Committee for the Tampa Bay Area Regional Transit Authority for three years, and was appointed to the CAC as a voting member by TBADA board member Melanie Griffin in 2018. And he served four years as a non-voting member of the CAC by appointment from the Hillsborough County MPO. And whereas, Bill graduated from Stetson University with a bachelor's degree in social sciences and business administration, and obtained a master's degree in American history and political science. And whereas, Bill is an accomplished commercial real estate broker, having spent 12 years with the Berkshire Hathaway Commercial Division, where he represented professional firms, retail businesses, manufacturers, and other business entities in their commercial real estate and business acquisition needs. And whereas, Bill has over 40 years of experience in operating, selling, and buying businesses for WRB Resources. His responsibilities include primary oversight for administration of two subsidiaries, E3 Solutions and Biotech Restorations, and coordination of a wide range of business activities including wetlands mitigation, ranch operations, undersea exploration, and land transactions. And whereas, Bill is a past president of the Stetson University National Alumni Association, past chair of the Tampa Bay Regional Coalition, past president of the Rotary Club of Tampa Bay, past chair of the Regional Transit Agency, designated as a cable TV pioneer, and received a gubernatorial appointment as a Kentucky Colonel. And whereas, Bill was recognized by his peers at the Florida Gulf Coast Commercial Association of Realtors as the recipient of the President's Service Award in 2008, 2010, 2013, and 2014. In addition to his service on the FGCAR Board of Directors, he is the 2017 recipient of FCGCAR's Henry Blanton Lifetime Achievement Award. Bill is an act, is active in the Commercial Alliance of the Florida Realtors, where he draws on his experience as a professional lobbyist and testifies regarding commercial real estate issues before the Florida State Legislature. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, in regular session duly assembled, that said board hereby commends Bill Roberts for his three-year term as chairman of the Citizens Advisory Committee for the Tampa Bay Regional Transit Authority, done and resolved in regular session with a quorum present and voting this 21st day of February 2023.
Move, approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Mr. Starkey?
Yep, Bill, I've known you for decades, I think, and gosh, I can't think of a more dedicated public servant than you, really. And it's been a pleasure as a member of TBADA and the MPO for all these years to see your very dedicated, active participation. It's a, it's just a real honor to be able to give this to you today, and I really thank you for your personal time that you gave to help bring about transit, that elusive transit solution for the Tampa Bay area. I promise you, we have not given up. We're just going to find another vehicle, but please address the board.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm humbled by this recognition. There is much to do in transportation in this region, and I'm pleased to have had a small part in moving it along the last, these last few years. Pasco County has the opportunity to lead the way in bringing this region together, and I thank you very much for this resolution and the time you've taken for this recognition. Thank you.
Board members, I think we should all come down and take a photo. Mr. Roberts?
Oh, thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations. That's for you. Wonderful all the time. I tell you about all those honors you've done. Not the whole world, no.
Folks right here first, please. Thank you. One more.
And one more. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you. Okay, so if you are here for the resolution on international trade, please approach the podium. They're trying to decide, they're being bashful of us. Okay, Resolution Number 23072, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, proclaiming February 21st, 2023 to be designated as International Trade and Tourism Day. Whereas, Pasco County International Trade and Tourism Day is to celebrate the global trade and governmental relationships built between Pasco County and its partners around the world. And whereas, these relationships strengthen our gross regional product and support thousands of local high-skill, high-wage jobs in Pasco County. And whereas, international trade and tourism highlights those companies established in Pasco County because of direct foreign investments and their contributions to our community through job creation and capital investment. And whereas, these activities are made possible through strong partnerships with international resource partner organizations, the Association of Bynational Chambers of Commerce, Foreign Consular Offices, the United States Department of Commerce, and Global Tampa Bay. A regional partnership between Pasco, Pinellas, and Hillsborough Counties that increases international business opportunities for local companies and markets the region globally as a top business destination. And whereas, the Board of County Commissioners and local trade and tourism companies continue to work together to connect with future generations, build the next generation of skilled trade and tourism employees, take charge of the public image of trade and tourism, and ensure the ongoing prosperity of the whole industry. And whereas, International Trade and Tourism Day serves as an opportunity to recognize all professionals, agencies, and organizations who bring value to Pasco County's trade and tourism industry. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said board hereby designates February 21st, 2023 as International Trade and Tourism Day, done and resolved in regular session with a quorum present and voting this 21st day of February. Move to approve.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Well, I want to welcome our Belizean friends and members of the International Council here to our board meeting this morning. We were very happy to have breakfast with some of the members here this morning at Starkey Market and to welcome them to our county, and this will be the first of an annual event that we will have here in the county, and we are so excited that you are our first visitors on our International Trade and Tourism Day. So I'd love to have you address the board, if you'd like.
Good morning, Commissioner and your board. Good morning, people, our lovely people of the Pasco County. Of course, my Belizean entourage and counterparts here. We are very much humbled to, and privileged to be here this morning. On this historical moment, I must congratulate you all on this great stride in developing this International Trade and Tourism Day, something of what I believe will bring economic development to your area. I must say that I'm very much amazed at the many developments, according to what I've understood, that have taken place over the past 20 years, the transformation through your leadership, and I'm sure that the transformation through your leadership had to have come by great vision, great enthusiasm, proper planning, unity, and of course, it had to come through support from the community. I see only things getting better here, and I'm hoping that this visit today will be the beginning of building relationship among common interests for our both regions, and something that will bring mutual benefits for all of us. Congratulations, and keep the good works. Thank you.
Thank you, and you know, excuse my rudeness, but would you mind giving your name and your title, and then let's introduce all of your entourage.
My name is Earl Trapp, Mayor of San Ignacio and Santalena, the western region in the country of Belize.
Thank you so much. And Turner, do you want to introduce everybody, or?
Sure. We have, we have just a few people here. Turner Arbor with the Pasco PDC, it's great to see you, Chairman, Board. Thank you so much for this resolution. We're very excited to celebrate the many outreaches that our communities had around the world through trade and tourism. With me here, we have, as you said, Mayor Trapp from the Kaya District of Belize, Macarena and Aria from the Belize American Chamber of Commerce, representatives from the Belize Economic Development. We also have representatives from our Global Competitiveness Committee that's made up of resource partners that help businesses expand their footprint overseas, as well as local exporters. We also have many representatives of tourism and the TDC. Together, we all work together to market and promote Pasco County around the world, and I think it's something that a lot of citizens don't know about, going to other countries and seeing products that are made right here in Pasco, anywhere you travel, really. In addition to the relationships we have with our government partners and other communities around the world that help us through technical education, education exchanges, and of course, through export trade, so. Want to, want to raise your hand?
Sure. By all means. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you so much, Commissioner Starkey, for bringing this resolution here today, this morning. It's, you know, Florida sports coast is becoming more sophisticated, and as that sophistication builds, we are telling our story in the international marketplace, and Central America is a key market for us, and we are very honored and appreciative of the partnership that we have with the PEDC as we continue to tell our story to the global market. So we're honored to be here today. The Florida Sports Coast team is here today, and we continue to do great things together, so I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
You know, one of the sports that we have in common is cycling. So the mayor and I were talking about, you know, we're building ourselves to be a big cycling community, and Belize also has a mountain biking and road cycling community, so something very interesting that we have in common. So let us go down, unless anyone else wants to say anything, and we'll take a photo.
I'd like to just say a couple of words there. Commissioner Oakley, go ahead.
Now, we have, do we have room down there?
I think we're probably better off up here.
Okay.
Matter of fact, I want to see, I want to see David Engel in this picture as well. But I'd say Belize is a beautiful place. Been on a couple of cruises, the snorkeling there, the area there is just absolutely gorgeous, so glad, glad we're partnering with you.
I mentioned to them that I, I like, you know, adventure travel, and on my 50th birthday, I went with a bunch of girlfriends to Belize and went scuba diving and hiking and had a great time. So it's a beautiful country and beautiful people. All right, we're going to take a photo, and then they have lots of adventures to go on today.
I think we should stay up here and go down there for a second. Gary. Gary. Commissioner, Gary, step in. We'll get big groups like this.
Will they keep coming? They added some more.
Because I don't think my camera's.
Perfect, thank you.
Of course, one TV. One, two, three. All right.
All right. Now we go.
Okay. I think I'm going to have to like tape it on here. I'll send you the link. And you know my password, right?
Okay, we're going to go to RS3. I see Jackson Davis. Gotta believe that, Sam. Does Mother Jenny, please come up too?
All right, good morning. So Resolution Number 23-070, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, congratulating Jackson Davis on achieving the rank of Eagle Scout. Whereas, Jackson Davis, the son of Jenny and David Davis, is 17 years old and a senior at Rendell Crin Technical High School. And whereas, on December 14th, 2022, Jackson Davis attained his Eagle Scout rank as an active member of Troop 77. And whereas, Jackson joined the Cub Scouts in 2011 when he joined PAC 7 in Newport Richie. During his time as a Boy Scout, Jackson held the positions of Senior Patrol Leader, Patrol Leader, Quartermaster, and Den Chief. And whereas, achieving the rank of Eagle Scout is of special significance, not only in scouting, but also in higher education, business, and community service. Jackson had to achieve and maintain the highest standards of service, conduct, and involvement within his troop and in his community. And whereas, to earn the rank of Eagle Scout, a Boy Scout must fulfill requirements in the areas of leadership, service, and outdoor skills. And Jackson has earned 48 merit badges, 21 of which are required to achieve the rank of Eagle Scout. His badges include archery, automotive maintenance, aviation, camping, citizenship, entrepreneurship, environmental science, first aid, horsemanship, lifesaving, rifle shooting, robotics, small boat sailing, space exploration, wilderness survival, and more, along with the following scouting awards. Mile Swim, National Outdoor Achievement Award in Camping, National Outdoor Achievement Award in Aquatics, Scuba Award, Kayaking Award, Snorkeling Award, Stand-Up Paddleboard Award, Whitewater Rafting Award, and the World Conservation Award. And whereas, Jackson has participated in numerous community service projects with his troop. His most memorable. Paddleboard Award, Whitewater Rafting Award, and the World Conservation Award. And whereas, Jackson has participated in numerous community service projects with his troop. His most memorable projects including serving those in need with the Messengers of Hope mission, roadside cleanup, coastal cleanup, scouting for food, and flags on graves for Memorial Day and Veterans Day. And whereas, for his Eagle Scout project, Jackson purchased a school bus and led the construction and conversion of the bus into a mobile food pantry. Jackson's family, friends, fellow Troop 77 members, Wendell Crin Technical High School LED robotics team members, and Mitchell High School swim team members helped with all aspects of this project, which took over 400 hours and almost 18 months to complete. This bus has already served thousands of meals and continues to serve those in need in our community. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said board hereby congratulates Jackson Davis on achieving the rank of Eagle Scout, done and resolved in regular session with a quorum present and voting this 21st day of February 2023.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Jackson, this is awfully impressive.
Yep.
You know, it's great to have a great mom and dad to help you do all the things you go do, but this list of things that you've accomplished is just amazing. How did you enjoy your experience all the way through?
I mean, Boy Scouts is just an amazing organization. It's really shaped me as a man and helped me to get a lot of leadership experiences as well as outdoor skills that I never would have gotten if I hadn't participated. So it's an amazing program.
No, it's impressive. The extra things you've gone to go through here, and your project is phenomenal as well. So it shows you've got a great heart as well. Commissioner Bradford.
I'm just very curious because I'm, you know, when I heard robotics, I really perked up because I'm very involved in that. So I'm curious what your plans are for the future.
I'm going into mechanical engineering, and right now I'm looking pretty heavily at UCF.
Okay, I got, do you know about AMSKILLs?
AMSKILLs, I've, it's, AMSKILLs really focuses strongly, from my understanding, on the more machining aspect than the design aspect.
Nope, but I'm going to talk to you. So we're going to get your. I asked my assistant to come out and make sure we have your information to see how we can engage you.
All right, yes, thank you.
And help your career.
Commissioner Bradford.
If I'm not mistaken, he probably knows Presidents of the United States joins your ranks. Jerry Ford was the Eagle Scout, so you're in good company with Presidents.
I have two in my family, so I know what it takes.
That's impressive. Commissioner Oakley.
Yep. You've made a great achievement to this far in your life, and most Eagle Scouts go on to be congressmen and could be President of the United States one day. So we hope during your studies and training for what job you do in the future, you choose Pasco to be your home, and you're definitely going to be one of our better citizens in the county. We have a lot of great citizens here, so you can add to that group. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Are you a senior?
Yes, I'm a senior.
Well, I'd like to say it's phenomenal what you've accomplished, and my daughter, former Representative Amber Mariano, was actually graduated UCF too. So if you need help in there as far as scholarships, she kind of like knew pretty where to look and go, but I think that the career is, career choice is phenomenal. It's going to be a great challenge, but there's no doubt you can do it.
Yes, thank you to the entire Board of Commissioners for this honor.
No, it's our, it's our honor, our pleasure. I will let the boards come down with me.
Yep.
Folks right here first, please. Thank you.
Have one look at me. Thank you.
I'll tell you, the future is bright with citizens like that. Congratulations again. Okay, now we're going to get to consent agenda. I have two items, and one is pulled to discuss, C14, and C15 has been withdrawn. Are there any other pulls from the consent agenda?
Move approval, all items left on the consent agenda.
Okay. Wait a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Commissioner Waitman, C14.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I pulled this item just as a philosophical principle. I, I don't believe that the county should be giving or selling any of the public assets for $1. And I appreciate, I went through and had talked with Mr. Carvalho, and I appreciate all the process in which these surplus properties are measured against and checking the box to make sure that there's not, you know, an additional internal use for that piece of property. But just out of sake of taking a public asset and selling it for a dollar, I just philosophically disagree with that. So that's the only reason why I pulled that item.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Oakley.
I'm not aware we sold any property for a dollar, so it'd be good to know, but I know we do have surplus property that we don't use at times, but I expect us to sell it for the value of that property and not necessarily give it away.
Not for profits.
And I know not-for-profit are some of those issues where you give those away.
So I'll be happy to address this. Yeah, so we are, we're taking these properties that have come to us through, say, foreclosures and liens, and offering them to nonprofits to build workforce housing. And so, in my opinion, this is a very important neighborhood revitalization tool that we have. And if we didn't, and we just started this a few months ago, and so I think it's a great program. And this is, this is my drug street, really, holiday drive. And if we can turn that street around with some better housing on it, the whole neighborhood's better for it. I don't think this would be worth more than 10, I didn't look at the, what they say it's worth, but these investments are really good for the county, in my opinion. So what we're doing is taking, when we go to surplus, these lots, which are typically in not the best neighborhoods, it goes to the nonprofits first, and they can, I don't know if they bid on it or how that, if it's a rotating circle, and maybe Kathy Pearson can discuss that, but we make it available to those who are, oh, here comes someone who can, those who are building in the workforce affordable housing arena only, so.
Yes, I can, Andrew Baxter, Facilities Management Director, I can elaborate a little bit on the process. So once a, once a house has not had taxes paid on it, which is the case for this particular house, it goes through a legal court process, which then, if nobody buys that tax deed, it then eschets to the county. It becomes county land when it, we had no desire for it to be ours, but it then became ours. And so through our surplus disposition process, which the board approved several years ago, we've identified this property as needing to be surplused. We also have worked through a process by which we enable those potential properties that are viable for Habitat or other housing programs to be vetted, and this property fits the bill in that case. And so that brings us to where we are today, that this property, and every single property has, is unique. And so we always take a look at the properties to ensure we're maximizing the use for the county's benefit. In this particular case, it did meet all the criteria for the Habitat program, and so that's why we're bringing it to you in this way.
Commissioner Oakley.
What I'd like to bring up is something that happened to us not too long ago, that we had surplused this property and given it to, I don't know if it's Feeding Tampa Bay or one of those families. We gave it to them as a 501(c)(3), and they took, and instead of using that building, they turned around, sold that building for several hundred thousands of dollars, and it's gone. The county didn't reap any benefit for it, even for 501(c)(3)'s that could use it. And then they reached out to ask for us for more money, but I think we ought to have property we give to 501(c)(3)'s. If they're not used by that 501(c)(3), that property should revert back to the county so we can find a use for it that is a 501(c)(3) that we use that property, rather than let it go into sale and just, you know, supply to one company. I don't think that's right.
We have taken that feedback from prior series of events, and in this one, we do have a reversionary clause.
Yes.
There's a restrictive covenant that Habitat will construct an affordable home on the property within five years. If not, then it, we can terminate.
Okay.
Yeah, it's there on page two. But I'm hoping that this will be the beginning of something new for that area that is directly behind the Wawa on US 19.
I'm going to, I'm going to agree with Commissioner Waitman as far as, we should look at this as an asset to the county. We should find out what the market is. There's more than one nonprofit out there anyway, and if they think it's worth 10, 15, 20, whatever it may be, I think it's something we should do because, you know, our citizens want us to do the most responsible thing for the money, and if it's going to save taxes for down the road by doing that, I'm okay with it. I think a nonprofit, if they're all going to bid, you know, any one of them bids on it, they could bid a dollar, they could bid $10, they could bid $1,000. But if one picks it over another one, and they want it that much more, it's going to be pretty much going to affordable anyway. So we're not, we're not changing that effect, we're just going to put a little bit of money into our tax base.
What is the process after we send it out for surplus to, is it first come, first served, or how was, how do they pick? Because we, we have a list that we vetted for those who can get the property.
Yes, so we have, first we, the surplus process first sees if there's any internal governmental use within Pasco County, could be used as a stormwater pond area or any other use that it might be. Then, once we identify that there's no county need.
So you send it out to every department?
We send it out to every department first. Then, once we determine, nope, there's no county need, then we send it out to this, this list of predefined housing-centric nonprofits, and we give them a window to respond. In this case, the respondent was Habitat for Humanity.
Okay, so, but other, we've surplus to other nonprofits as well.
There, yes, there are, I will need to give you that list, but there are more than one.
I think that would be great if you could email that list to all the commissioners, just so they, they know how this program is working.
The other thing that occurs, anytime that we push out one of these nonprofit notices to the nonprofit agencies, we copy all the board members and the staff so that you are aware that we have now kind of hit this next milestone in a surplus property disposition.
So this, this property, someone just texted me, is worth about $13,000, though someone looked at the criminal history on that street. I don't know, there's been a lot of shootings and things, but I would say to you that building a house, it's mostly mobile homes on there, so, and old mobile homes, but building a house on this neighborhood is the beginning of greater tax revenue on a street that really needs a redo, so.
Commissioner Waitman.
Thank you. And I agree with all of your points, Commissioner Starkey, and my, my reason for pulling this item has nothing to do with vetting our community, fixing blighted neighborhoods, supporting housing projects. The mere reason for pulling this is just, I think it's wrong that we take a public asset that has value, and we know it has value of more than a dollar, and in selling it for that. And I appreciate, you know, again, the county's process in vetting these properties and what they're worth. The email that came, that came out actually is what caught my attention, I think that's two of them, and immediately responded back to Mr. Carvalho, whoever, hey, I don't necessarily agree with letting a property go for a dollar because, you know, every dollar we can take in, it would allow us to, you know, go fix a slide at a park, go and do, you know, whatever projects that we need. You know, it's hard to get anything for a dollar these days, so I, I just philosophically disagree with letting a county asset go for $1.
And I'll say to that, I mean, one thing you mentioned, Andrew, they may not even build this property for five years. So I think, just like in a real estate transaction, when you take an offer from somebody, let them make an offer, whatever it may be. They may say, we're going to build it in a year, which is a lot more value. They may say two years, three years, whatever the terms are, let's find out how they're going to build, what they're going to go build, and what the price will pay. And then we can take a look at what offer do we want to accept, just like a regular business might do.
We could tweak the, the interaction with the nonprofits in that way, that would create a little bit of competition to force them to give different ideas for how fast they could build something, or whatever those different aspects could be. Ultimately, it's the board's decision for, for moving forward, and it is state statute that allows you to do this as well. You know, it says, State Statute 12538, "For the purposes of promoting community interest in welfare, the applicant for such price, whether nominal or otherwise, as such board may affix."
So I'm going to speak up again because I'm going to tell you that.
Commissioner Starkey.
Yeah, thank you. This county, as along with many counties, has a real problem with affordable housing, and this is a wonderful way for the county to help build that stock. So, you know, when Habitat for Humanity was building homes there on Leisure Lane, they were losing money on every house, and they paid $10,000 for those lots. So they ended up pulling out of that area. Now, there's some other issues there because they, they're on, it's in a flood zone, but I just think that the benefit to the county is greater than $13,000, so.
Yeah, and to discuss the Habitat, since you brought it up, over Leisure Lane and Van Duren, it is built up as far as it's a flood zone. They had to build the structures up, had to spend 20, 30, 40 grand more, and it cost infeasible. What we need to do is look at that whole area to make it better, so that's a separate item. But I do appreciate Commissioner Waitman bringing this forward because every bit that we save our taxpayers is what we should be doing, and if it's going to make it, as Andrew just said, a little more competitive with everybody looking at it, and it couldn't even, it doesn't even have to be just our list, I think it should be thrown out there like a regular RFP. Let's go see who wants to bid on it, throw it out there in the public so everybody gets to look at, not just a few select people we have, because there's other nonprofits that want to build as well, that aren't established in the county, going through the regular procedures.
No, I'm going to disagree with that.
Commissioner Waitman.
Thank you. And I love our state, you know, generational Floridian here, fantastic legislature, but I, just because the state says it's all right to do it, doesn't necessarily mean it's all right to do it. So I appreciate you providing that cover. I'm going to respectfully disagree with that.
Commissioner Bradford.
Yeah, we need an amen out of the pastor on that one. Is there a time certain, are you, in your thought process, is there a time certain for these properties, like two years, three years, four years, or are you going to let the market determine?
So my experience, you know, great experience, Commissioner Oakley did too, and Chairman on the Swiftmont Governing Board, you know, surplus properties were put out, had the market value put on it, they went out to bid and either sold for what the market value was or highest bidder. And those properties were immediately recouped back into land acquisition trust fund or what have you, to go in and purchase other environmentally sensitive lands or different water mitigation projects within those properties. And I very much appreciated that policy and the principle of how those funds came and went. It always kept something going on in the coffers, and there's, there's value in that. And, you know, they're selling for a fair price. These properties aren't selling for, you know, buku, way over the top market prices, but you're recouping. but you're recouping fair market value for the taxpayer investment. And then, you're allowing that taxpayer investment, which, if you do it right, property values go up, right? So, a little bit more comes back in, and then you allow value for your next public, your next public project, because there's a little more money in there. So, you know, having that experience and seeing, seeing these, I, I just philosophically just disagreed with letting any property go for a dollar. Again, it has nothing to do with the organization and what their mission is. I just, we're entrusted, this board's entrusted, in managing the public fund, in making sure we're making a smart investment for the public. I know I wouldn't sell any of my property for a dollar, therefore, I feel it's incumbent upon me as a representative on this board, if I wouldn't do it for myself, for my household, I, I can't do that with other public money.
Commissioner Starkey?
So, I would say, and I agree philosophically, that we are stewards of the public money, and I would say, if we didn't do the program that we're doing here, someone's gonna buy that lot for $13,000 and move an old nasty trailer on there, and that's, because that's what's in the neighborhood right now. I've seen it happen in the holiday over and over again, and so, if we wanna start turning that community around, we need to do better. And we'll, we'll get more tax revenue from newly built home on that street than we would an older mobile home being towed and plopped on there, which is what the neighborhood is full of. So, I think this is a better investment for the taxpayers of Pasco County. Plus, it gives someone who needs affordable housing an opportunity.
Commissioner Oakley?
And looking at this, how do we approve this? Are we changing the way we've doing things? Have you got a direction from what we're talking about here now, or do you need a motion, changing something?
No, sir. The, you know, the department's recommendation is, is what you see in front of you, to surplus it for the $1 nominal fee.
So, we're to vote this down?
No, I'm gonna make a motion to pass it.
There's discussion on the floor, I'm trying to figure out which way to go right now.
Why would we not want to better the neighborhood?
I'm not gonna approve it for a dollar, so.
Well, we can pull a trailer on there.
If I could just, just chime in real quick. So, yeah, the, the issue before you is, is this, this particular parcel and sale, as, as Mr. Baxter has presented. Philosophically, there are a number of notes that, that I've made, right? We have different policy goals for assuming things. This board decides what that policy is, and we, we will implement that policy. So, I, I do think that the real estate team and the, the county as a whole take pieces of property on an individual basis. They do look at, you know, for example, we, we sold utility land to Rooker for quite a profit, right? And, and we've reinvested that back in, back into the county. So, we are thoughtful in that approach. I think the team recognized that this particular piece in this particular area, for, for what Habitat wanted to do, it seemed to align with our affordable housing goals, and so, we've, we've pushed down the path that we have. Whether we sell it to them for a dollar, whether we sell it to them for $10,000, $13,000, I think I've made some notes here that we can perhaps look at some adjustments to our policy and still meet the board's overall intended goals, and we can bring that back to you. As far as this matter before you, yeah, I, I need you to decide and tell me what to do.
And couldn't the public have bought it?
All right, so, let me, let me go...
And bear in mind, too, this property is sheated to the county, right? So, it's one thing if we invest taxpayer dollars to purchase said property, but when it escheats, liens, taxes, everything is canceled. So, it's coming to us with a clean title, and so, this is really nothing borrowed, nothing gained here, you know? It's, that, that's kinda how we looked at it.
So, what might be good to do is, if it's clearly gonna be defeated to be sold for a dollar at this point, from what I can see, it might be good to put the recommendation after that to say, "We wanna go put it on the market, we wanna see a single-family home built, we're gonna take an offer into whatever we're gonna do, and whatever terms you're gonna do for the future." But let's go address the issue for the item first on C-14 right now.
I'll make motion to deny.
I'll second the motion. Okay, we got a second from Mr. Bradford. Commissioner Bradford? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay. Wow.
Four to one?
That's interesting.
Four to one, okay. Now, Commissioner Wademan, do you wanna make a motion as far as what you wanna see done in the future?
Yeah, so, with this, with this item, I think this item, it, we bring it back, now we, you know, we, obviously, I think this board wants to see good intentions for this property, for this county asset, so, I guess, I mean, did, from my understanding, I could be wrong, maybe I misinterpreted, but if there was no public ability to make an offer on this, on this property, again, I refer back to my experience at Swiftland, there's always an opportunity for the public to participate in any publicly owned land, to make a bid on something, and either it fits criteria or it doesn't. So, I don't know if it's, if we put this into, like the chairman said, a formal RFP process, but I think it's important that nonprofits and whatnot, you know, play a role. Maybe it's a, it's a, if you're a nonprofit like Habitat, maybe you score higher on an RFP or something. You know, there's, there's different criteria for RFP projects and packages, but again, you know, thank you for the board for supporting the, the $1 issue. Certainly was not my intent to deny affordable housing in any way, so I don't, policy discussions more than welcome.
Should we give it, give it to you to bring back to us with a way we should have this in the future, rather than just a dollar?
Well, I think, I think, let me give, let me just have one opportunity to just share. We have a pretty good methodology already. We have five options available to us for the, for the disposition of county-owned land in our already existing, and it's actually a subsection of the purchasing ordinance that we have, which discusses the surplus of county property. So, we can do a public bid sale, we can do a private sale if it's an adjacent ownership, we can do an alternative disposition method, which is typically done if we've gone through one of the other processes, and we need to kinda go to an alternative process, and that's usually managed through posting it and then watching the bid price finally reach a point where somebody says, "Yes, I wanna buy that." We have option D, which is the conveyance to a governmental entity, which we've done in the past, and we've done that in the past for free, or to a nonprofit entity. And option E is exchange of real property, is another option that we have available to us. It's really just choosing the right fit, and I'll tell you, it's, to, to your point, Commissioner Wademan, almost, I would say, 95% of all of our previous dispositions, which we do several of them a year, have been either some sort of a fee is associated with it, and it's typically driven by, by a market, public bid sale. We do have a couple every now and again that meet the right criteria, and this one just happened to meet all the right criteria, for, for a nonprofit disposition. So, we really do try to look at that. We can take this one, based on the board's direction here, and use one of these other methodologies that we already have in place, and I think that's what...
And just bring it back to us?
Yep.
Okay, I'm good with it.
Yeah, and, and again, your, the policy, this Mr. Carvalho explained to me as we were talking about this prior to the board meeting, it's a very good and thorough checklist when you go to surplus the county asset or what department might needs it. So, I think, I think that piece of it is, is sound. I think you all do a good job in, in being very thorough and, in understanding what you're doing with that, that piece of property, so I, I very much appreciate that. I just, again, philosophically, for a dollar, I just, I couldn't do it.
So, if I could, we're gonna end this conversation, and we got a couple items that are very important we gotta bring up. Andrew, if you would, you've, you've got, and Commissioner, Mike, you've heard all the feedback, and I'm sure you can bring back something to us. What you've done has been great, but I think Commissioner Wademan brought up a great idea as far as just a little different approach coming up, so, thank you. Mr. Cronin is here?
Mike is here.
Oh, Mike, okay, Mike's gonna do it, okay. All right, if, if you could, let's try to do this quick, because I'm gonna...
You got it. I'll go as quick as possible. Morning, Mr. Chair, again, members of the board. I am here to present our quarterly update for the Pasco DC, keep the economic development train going, it seems today. So, without further ado, we'll jump right in. So, starting here with business recruitment, so, just giving you an idea of our pipeline. You'll see that we have a very healthy pipeline. We have about 103 active projects. Majority of that, as you see the trend continuing, is advanced manufacturing. We have about half of our active projects, and, I'm sorry, half of the leads are in advanced manufacturing, and about a third of the active projects are advanced manufacturing. One thing I wanted to point out, just to celebrate International Trade and Tourism Day as well, we have several international projects that we're working, approximately 69 international projects, and just to highlight some of the key countries that these projects are coming from, we have 17 coming from Germany, 13 from the UK, five from India, four from France, and three each from Brazil, Canada, China, and Switzerland. So, really active in the international side, so we appreciate Commissioner Starkey recognizing that as well. Next slide. So, so far in the projects, so, still got some work to do. We have one win. We did announce Gary Plastics last, a couple months ago, I believe, so that's, that's coming down the pike. But as you see with the pipeline being very healthy, we're, we're very hopeful that we can get there and get that done this year. So, next slide. So, a little update on our business retention expansion, so you'll see that, that first metric is still tied to Career Source, and there's still some, some changes there, as you know, so that's kinda hampered with that. But we do have 19 company visits so far, and 18 workforce connections. Remember, this is last quarter, so we're on pace for the year. So, highlight on some of the events, I won't go through every one of them, but did wanna point out, STEUS there on the left, that's the Southeast U.S.-Japan Association. That comes to Florida once every 14 years, so we are excited to participate in that. And now, with code restrictions going down in travel, we anticipate going to Japan for next year's conference. We also have the, we attended the Let Us Do Good Village, this is an association with Tunnel to Towers, as you know, the Village of Land and Lakes. We're very excited to talk to them and collaborate on a potential Veterans Accelerator that we would do on, on site there with them. And we also hosted Leadership Pasco Business and Industry Day again. We had successful business tours of many of our companies here, like True Simulation, Touchpoint, and Bravado Pharmaceuticals as well, on the site. So, marketing and snapshot, we have over 900,000 in estimated or immediate value. Commissioner Mariano, I think you asked me last year kinda how that broke down, so we added that this year. You'll see the top getter on that was our announcement with, with Gary Plastics back in December, Thursday. This is a little snapshot on our website, so you'll see we had over 23,000 webpage views. That's across all of our websites. Many people don't know that we have multiple, so we did put those on there for you, and we did give the top locations of visitors by state outside of Florida. So, we'll see hits from Virginia, California, Maryland, Georgia, and New York, so, cover our top targets there. So, a snapshot on social media, you see the audience impressions, engagements there, and we have some of our social media handles up there for you to reference as well. On the financial growth side, so, we still boast a very healthy list of private investors that contribute to our organization. We had three new investors last quarter, Florida Blue, Marsh McLennan Agency, and Realty Trust Group. We have close to 200,000 raised to date, and 90 total investors, with 42 of them being active in our policy, Policy Council or Board of Directors. So, a couple upcoming events I just wanted to highlight, we're very excited about Grow Pasco. As you all know about our Smart Start Entrepreneurship ecosystem, this is a day-long conference at the Hyatt in Wesley Chapel, meant to serve our entrepreneurs here in the community. We brought many good speakers on various topics that affect entrepreneurism, so we encourage you to put that word out there, and anybody listening or watching, you know, please take a look to, to attend. We also have our Net Fest coming up at Tampa Bay Sporting Place, that's at the end of March. This is our big casual business networking event, over 250, 300 people, really good for business-to-business connections. And not too early to announce our annual awards again, believe it or not, coming up in September, we are gonna hold us at the IPAC, the PHSC IPAC in Wesley Chapel once again. It's a fantastic facility, and we're very happy that they're welcoming us back. With that, any questions on our MOU presentation?
No, very exciting news, though. Appreciate, appreciate the work, and it's very interesting with that UK activity that's going on, especially with the trip coming up soon.
Yes, we do have a trip coming up soon. Turner can go through a list better than I can, but very active on international this year.
Well, I hate to cut you short, but we gotta move on to another, a very important agenda.
They have things to go do, so.
You got it. The penny, the penny programs, you have that in your pocket, so you can review any questions by us now.
Mike, thank you very much.
All right, have a great day. See you later today.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
Mr. County Attorney?
I desire the advice of the Board of County Commissioners concerning the case of Rad Sports Pasco Wiregrass LLC versus Pasco County, case number 51-2022-CA-002982-CAAXWS, Florida's Sixth Judicial Circuit, to discuss settlement negotiations and strategy related to litigation, and for that reason, I request a private attorney-client meeting. If the board approves, you should open the private attorney-client meeting and announce the commencement and the estimated time of the private attorney-client meeting, and the names of the persons attending. And at the conclusion of the private attorney-client meeting, the board's public meeting should be reconvened, and you should announce the termination of the private attorney-client meeting. The entire private attorney-client meeting will be reported by a certified court reporter, and the transcript thereof will be made a public record upon conclusion of the litigation. I estimate the attorney-client meeting will last approximately 60 minutes. We have scheduled a certified court reporter to be in attendance in the commissioner's conference room for the private attorney-client meeting. Outside counsel is present.
I hereby announce the commencement of a private attorney-client meeting, at which board will discuss settlement negotiations and strategy related to litigation expenditures in the case of Rad Sports Wiregrass LLC versus Pasco County, case number 51-2022-CA-02982-CAAXWS, Florida Circuit Courts, Florida Circuit, Sixth Judicial Circle. The names of the person expected to attend private attorney-client meeting are Chairman Jack Mariano, Vice Chairman Ron Oakley, Commissioners Catherine Starkey, Gary Bradford, and Seth Wademan, the County Attorney Jeff Steinschneider, and the Chief County Attorney David A. Goldstein, and County Administrator Mike Carbella, outside counsel Dane Blunt, and Ray Allen, and a court reporter. The estimated length of the private attorney-client meeting is approximately 60 minutes. The private attorney-client meeting will now convene in the commissioner's conference room.
Thank you.
Thank you.